Over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel. And it would also be found on the Lunenburg Access YouTube Channel within 24 hours after the meeting. If you wish to join us using Zoom, the meeting ID is 834-4804-6684. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by open meeting law. I would ask everyone who is able to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Our first matter of business is public comment. Public comments regarding any topic under the scope of authority of the school committee will be entertained during either public comment session on the agenda. Please remember, comments are limited to three minutes per commenter and 10 minutes in total. The 10-minute total can be increased by a vote of the committee. Public comments about individual students are prohibited to protect the privacy of the student per state and federal law. Do we have public comments?
Mrs. LeBlanc is also...
Okay.
Has a comment.
Thank you. You may come forward and just state your name, please, and address.
My name is Darrell Plant. I live at 490 Lancaster Ave. At the September 21st meeting, my wife read a statement about SEL, an impending equity audit, that we wrote together. There was no comment from the committee. At the October 5th meeting, during public comment, Mr. Scullum-Breen, if I'm pronouncing it properly...
No, you did all right.
...addressed our concerns about SEL. From the September 21st meeting, we stand by our original statement. Some of Mrs. Scullum-Breen's comments were, one, there were decades of a proven record of requiring all students to take an SEL curriculum. However, peer-reviewed empirical data done in an echo chamber is not conclusive. SEL originated by evaluating the impact a certain curriculum would have on children with the following characteristics: children who experienced trauma, children of broken homes, no father, no mother, no structure, children with no positive influences or role models, children who have never been supported or loved. Take these children and give them SEL support they never had, and they do better. Supplant the parent with an SEL curriculum. They become better students and possibly better citizens. The overwhelming majority of Lunenburg students do not fit into this box and should not be required to take SEL. However, we do fully support the small number of students who do need the support, and we want to make sure that they get it. There is no evidence by study that forcing all students of a similar demographic such as Lunenburg will improve the learning, test scores, and make better citizens overall. Mr. Scullum-Breen also said that what concerned and troubled him was that my wife and my remarks resembled that of a conservative opinion-maker. Let me assure all that these statements are ours, not plagiarized. Trying to diminish our valid points this way is insulting. Third, Mr. Scullum-Breen then used a quote from a Justice Breyer in order to bolster his advocacy for indoctrinating children in schools to become better students and citizens. In other words, supplant the parent with an SEL curriculum. He intimated that since parents, churches, and other institutions indoctrinate children every day with their values, then we should not be alarmed when our schools do it. This was the most troubling thing I ever heard coming from a school committee member. Have you learned nothing from history? The state should never be in the business through its schools of indoctrinating children so that they become better citizens. Concluding, SEL is not intended to produce high-performing students, a well-educated student body. It is a program of equity. Currently, high-performing students and even students at grade level are not being challenged appropriately. They are bored and they are languishing. This is immoral. This is a direct result of failed leadership. This administration continues to fail our students in our community while pursuing an ideological agenda which has more to do with social engineering than with educational excellence. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Mrs. Licio?
Rhonda Licio, 181 Reservoir Road. I'd just like to briefly comment on the previous speaker. I actually heard all the meetings that he referenced in his statement. And one thing that I will say is I completely agree with allowing parents to opt out from any social-emotional learning or anything else they object to. And the reason for this is what you may classify as the psychology of the child, a family with particular religious or philosophical beliefs may see as the spirit or the soul. So I think it's wise, when you have opposition, to allow an opt-out. But that's not the reason I'm... primary reason I came here tonight. I just wanted to elaborate on my comments I made at the capital planning meeting. Basically, what I was trying to do was advocate for the program that we already have at the high... middle school, high school. I think that the Resource Officer Program combined with the Comfort Dog is practically genius. I mean, the considerations I would have in addressing school safety would be, there are three main ones. You want the most immediate response possible. You want to make sure it's safe without frightening the students. And you have to obviously evaluate the cost. And I think that the program we have is already excellent and should be expanded into the other two buildings. Now, the problem is figuring out how to fund it. And so that, I think, would be the ultimate goal. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just a point of clarification, Madam Chair, through you to the Superintendent. Is our school resource officer specifically for the middle high school, or does he serve all four buildings?
He does spend time in each of the buildings. The majority of the time, however, is spent at the middle high school.
Okay. That was my understanding, but I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we have one more comment via Zoom.
Yes. Mrs. LeBlanc?
Mrs. LeBlanc. I can't see you way out there.
Oh, nice to see you all. You know, I'm not quite at stairs, so I can't quite access the building yet, but I'm very close. Be able to see you in person soon. I am Lisa LeBlanc. I'm the president of the Lunenburg Educators Association, and I just wanted to make public comment about our Thanksgiving food drive. So we have, coupled with the food pantry, to supply all of the pieces of a Thanksgiving meal. So we have each building set to collect different parts of a Thanksgiving meal. So we are asking for 250 cans of green beans and 250 cans of cranberry sauce at the primary school. At the elementary school, we're asking for 250 boxes of stuffing and 250 cans of corn. And then at the middle high school, we are looking for 250 jars of gravy. I can only imagine how heavy those will be. And as many roasting pans, 250 roasting pans if possible. And then we had 250 boxes of cornbread, but as of the other day, a very generous family donated 100 of those boxes of cornbread. So we think this is just a new way to try to show our community how we can help support them and have each building have a task. So I'll try to provide the Superintendent with an update, but I haven't been able to physically make it around to the building, so I'll see if I can have someone help me with that. And just thank you to our community. Lunenburg is an incredibly helpful, supportive, kind community, and this is a great thing for us to do before Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, and we're glad you're up and about.
Carol, can I make a public comment?
Yes, you may.
There was some activity on Facebook today, and I just wanted to reach out to the parents, not particularly the parent who said it, but there was some talks about some concerns about bullying in the schools. And I just want to remind parents, please reach out to your principals, to your teachers. If there's activity going on on the bus, let us know, because Facebook is not necessarily where administration is going to see this concern, and no child should be going to school sad and upset about being bullied. But what's sadder is if the teachers and the administration don't know and can't do anything to deal with it. It was an upsetting story to see, and I just want to make sure that the kids are getting the resources they need and that it's being controlled, because no child should be going concerned about a classmate bullying them. So please, if anyone is having concerns with their kids, having issues in school, reach out to administration, because no one wants any child going to school sad.
Okay. Thank you.
Carol, can I make a comment? So I do want to address the comments of the first two commenters very briefly. I think this is ultimately, this topic of social-emotional learning ultimately comes down to a difference of opinion. And I stated my opinion here about four weeks ago. I'm not going to belabor the point. I'm a parent of one of those high-functioning students, and I share some of your concerns around the level of challenge that my student encounters academically, but I don't think that has high nor hair to do with social-emotional learning. As a parent, I think that it is a good resource, not just for our individual students, in making them aware of, as I explained previously, some of the blind spots that we all have in parenting, and making them aware of differences cultural amongst others, and bringing home those questions, as my child does. And I find that to be extremely valuable as the parent of an individual, but I also find it to be extremely valuable as a community member to foster a stronger, more supportive community. And that's just the way I see it. And until I am convinced otherwise, that will be the opinion that I vote on as a member of the school committee. Further to that community and school spirit, I want to congratulate everybody who is involved in all of the events of this past weekend. I've said here many times I was born and raised here. I've participated in homecoming since I was four years old, I believe, in 1976. It may have been the first year they ran the parade. And I think this year was as good as any homecoming year we have ever had in Lunenburg. The floats were awesome. The activities that the Boy Scouts and the PTO, the tables that they had out there were great. The Miles for Miles, the Lions Club activities, the trunk-or-treat, and a defensive stand at the end of the fourth quarter to win a really competitive, meaningful football game. I understand there were two dances as well, which I did not participate in, but I've heard great things about those as well. It's a real tribute to our community, and I just want to thank everybody who had anything to do with all of the above. It was a phenomenal weekend. Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment? Okay, then we will move on to the Chair's report. And I top on my list. I'd like to congratulate the students and staff involved with last weekend's homecoming parade and football game. Both the parade and the game were a great success. I'd also like to thank Mr. Beardmore for organizing the school committee's participation in trunk-or-treat. We saw about 150 or so kids. We gave out a lot of candy, and we were very happy to add to the children's Halloween spirit. It was a great afternoon. On another note, we're still waiting for DBUS to let us know the maximum number of students our current buses can accommodate. Once this is determined, we will discuss the need to change the bus policy. I just wanted parents to know it was a discussion we began, and we said we would get back at it, and we haven't gotten back at it. We're still waiting for information. So that's what I have. Moving on, review and approve minutes. We have regular meeting minutes from August 24th. Has everyone had a chance to look at those minutes?
I have, yes.
And so is someone ready to make a motion regarding that?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from August 24th.
And a second, please?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, the minutes do pass. It's nice not to have to be able to roll call, because we're all in one spot. Okay. There are no line item transfer items this evening, so we go to the Superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to provide you a little bit of an update on the school-based MCAS and assessment Zoom meetings that were held for parents. The Zoom meetings were held by each school to review MCAS results, I read the fall benchmark results, the new K-5 math and ELA curriculum. And they were well-attended at the primary school and the Turkey Hill Elementary School. Initially, based on a lack of turnout for the original evening that was scheduled at the middle school, we rescheduled that meeting. However, even at the second attempt, attendance at both the middle school and the high school sessions was very low. However, all of the presentations, the slide decks were narrated and recorded. Those narrated overview of the presentation, along with any questions and the answers that emerged through the forums, was also sent home by school. Anybody who has any questions is encouraged to reach out to my office, and we'll put you in touch with the curriculum office. Parent-teacher conferences were well-attended. There were some in-person appointments and some virtual appointments at each school. And I've asked all of the principals to discuss the model of the parent-teacher conferences with their school advisory councils to get some feedback and maybe some ideas for ways in which we can make them more effective. I will also echo some comments on homecoming weekend. As usual, the floats were absolutely amazing. The theme was board games, and the senior class won this year with Candy Land. And it was great to see us come out of that football game with a win. Really capped off a perfect, perfect weather day. It really was fantastic. Both the middle school dance and the high school dance were both very well-attended. And a special shout-out to Mrs. Geren and all of the class advisors for all of their efforts in working with and supporting the students all along the way these last couple of weeks, working on their floats. And a great big thank you to the administration, who attended all of the activities, including the Miles for Miles run on Sunday morning. Much appreciated. An update on hybrid school committee meetings. I've been meeting with representatives from IT and from PAC. We are looking to determine what equipment would be needed to facilitate hybrid meetings from the middle high school. We're still researching some options for audio, because some of the options that we looked at may not fully meet our needs with the way we run a meeting. So we're exploring some other options as well. We'll meet again for follow-up. And we believe, based on the equipment that we're looking at right now, it looks like supply chain issues won't necessarily be a problem in securing all of the equipment. However, we are coming into the holiday season with lots and lots of packages, you know, being shipped, so that potentially could be a challenge. However, when I... when we get to a point where we finalize the list of equipment and the model that we're looking to use, I'll be back with an update on that. I also wanted to make you aware that we applied for and received a new grant that continues to promote the family engagement focus within the district. This grant is along the same lines as the School Community Link Services Grant that we have for our kiddos from birth up to school age. This grant would support home visits for 18-month-olds to four-year-olds, and we would identify households for the visits based on need. And the focus for those home visits would be around social-emotional support as well as literacy. The equity audit, we are in phase two, and I am currently coordinating one-to-one interviews with key stakeholders and the consultants. And members of the school committee have been invited for voluntary one-on-one interviews along with district and building leaders. The Equity Advisory Council for the district will be the only focus group interview that they will conduct, and they will be looking for input from families, staff, and students at the middle high school, so six through 12, through surveys. So those surveys will be coming. I haven't received the links for those just yet, but as soon as we have them, we'll be sending them out. I also had wanted to mention transportation, that we have not yet had a response from DBUS relative to their capability to bus all students. And I did want to make mention, it partly connected to what Mrs. Kelly had referenced regarding a safe and inclusive school environment. I just wanted to remind parents that if your child is experiencing difficulties at school, whether those difficulties be academic, social, emotional, or behavioral, we have supports available for our students at school. And I would strongly encourage any parents to share their concerns with the appropriate staff. And depending on the situation, the appropriate staff could be teachers, administrators, coaches, athletic director, class advisors, club advisors, as well as our extended-day staff. Again, we need to be made aware of any concerns so that we can address those concerns, because it's our goal to ensure that every child feels safe and included in our school setting. And as always, if ever your concerns are not addressed to your satisfaction, or if concerns persist, absolutely, I would encourage families to reach out directly to me. I have some things to look forward to here in the month of November. It is National Literacy Month, so everybody should focus a little bit on reading, a little something they enjoy, especially reading with your children. Now, fourth term... our first term ends on the 4th. On the 7th, we have our first-ever STEM night for the primary school students. That's from 6 to 8. On the 8th, schools are closed. That's Election Day, and our staff are participating in professional development. On the 10th, each school will be holding assemblies in recognition of Veterans Day. The 11th, schools and offices are closed in observance of Veterans Day. I think timely for all of the conversation relative to public comment this evening. On the 13th of November, that is World Kindness Day, and it actually kicks off a World Kindness Week. On the 16th is our next school committee meeting. That will be via Zoom at 6:30. And on the 23rd, there will be an early dismissal for the Thanksgiving recess. Schools will remain closed Thursday and Friday for that Thanksgiving holiday. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Thank you very much. All right.
Just a quick question on the busing topic. Do we... did we make a written request to D., and do we have a particular timeframe that we expect an answer on that? I understand we haven't gotten an answer, but is there an expectation?
As we understand it right now, they're dealing with a particular challenge at the So their capacity to get back to us quickly at the moment is a bit compromised. We recognize that and understand that, but we are not going to lose focus of the fact that we need some information.
Okay.
All right. So we have no student representative unless they're on Zoom.
I'm here.
Oh, you're there. Sorry, the screen I have didn't have you on there. Glad to see you.
It's good to see you, too. So the past homecoming weekend was a success, and this class, the senior class, was able to win, and this made them an undefeated class for the first time in Lunenburg's history.
Realize that.
And the LHS and the MHS was... they both held dances as fundraisers, which was also a very great success. The middle school held a Halloween dance, and the freshman class for the high school held a homecoming dance, and the turnout was great. I think around 200 students showed up to the homecoming dance, which was really good. There's nothing new to report at Turkey Hill. And for the primary school, as the Superintendent mentioned before, there's going to be a STEM night on the 7th. And on the 2nd through 4th and the 9th, there's a book fair with a grand event where grandparents can come to shop with their students. And as far as I know, the Student Council will... Student Council and National Honor Society will be volunteering to help out with the little kids.
That sounds great. Sounds like fun.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to old business. We have the ESSER budget update.
So Mr. Cassidy is with us virtually this evening?
Hello, Mr. Cassidy, virtually.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
We can.
And can you see the presentation screen?
Yes.
So tonight, I'm presenting just a quarterly report or budget update on the two ESSER grants. By the way, this is Mike Cassidy, I'm the business manager, and thank you for allowing me to present remotely this evening. Just very briefly, ESSER II grant is a $588,000 grant. It expires September 30th, 2023. It's currently funding a number of positions: math specialist, targeted math teacher at the high school, guidance counselor at the primary, social worker at the middle school, and a part-time IT technician that services all schools. In addition to that, it funds some stipends, a small budget for supplies, and fringe benefits for any full-time positions. As I had mentioned earlier, earlier in the school year, you know, this was going to be a crucial presentation. We would have, knowing where everyone fell based upon hiring, we would be able to determine what we see to be any deficits or surpluses in the grant. what we see to be any deficits or surpluses in the grant. So, in ESER 2, at this time, we're projecting a grant surplus of $63,703. Now, part of that balance has to do with moving salary wages expense from an IT technician last year to the FY22 budget. And a recently awarded grant by DESI to the department, to our department, Lunenburg Public Schools, for an after-school program. And there was, there was a $45,000 set aside in ESER 2 for that after-school program. So, just looking at what we had spent last year, and based upon the grant, any surplus in the budget programming for that is included in the $63,000. But I want you to be aware, there's potentially another $15,000 that will become available once the program is implemented. So, we're currently doing some program development and trying to get staff hired as soon as possible. So, depending upon hiring dates and implementation dates, that could be another $15,000 on that Next is ESER 3. This is a little further out in the future. This expires September 30, 2024. This position is funding a guidance counselor at the middle high school, an intervention specialist at Turkey Hill, works very closely with our curriculum staff and administration, and our Title I Director, social workers at Turkey Hill and the middle school, and four tutors, two tutors at the primary, two tutors at Turkey Hill. And those are part-time tutors. In addition, in FY24, or next school year, we will be adding the mass specialist from ESER 2 to ESER 3. So, it's a little feedback on what that's funding. And once again, ESER 3 funds a small service line item and a very small supply account. And we're projecting a larger deficit, excuse me, larger surplus in that grant. And really, that's reflecting a couple things, which is moving our part-time tutor salaries to the FY22 budget. We've had some difficulty, we've had some turnover. This isn't marked on the sheet here, but we've had some turnover in our tutor group. We've had difficult hiring. So, the start, there's been some surplus from that. Also, we, the fringe line item will not be spent. So, based upon the number of full-time positions, there were less than grant employees opted into the health insurance program, and that is creating a surplus in that budget. So, that's, we've got some time to spend that $157,000. Talking to the administrative team, you know, there are some potential expenses to spend those surpluses. And very quickly, we need Chromebooks. We're looking at a potential 400 units of Chromebooks. The grant is not going to pay for all 400, we realize that, but even if it offsets a part of that purchase. I-ready math consumables at the primary and math consumables, I-ready consumables at Turkey Hill. Small mentoring stipend based upon the new mentoring model that we have. I believe that one is $750. Potentially extending the guidance counselor at the primary school for FY24, and the targeted math teacher for FY24. We are currently seeking some hard quotes on split AC units for some of the classrooms at Turkey Hill, second floor, Turkey Hill. Also, some other additional technology purchases is the upgrades to the computer lab at the high school, and then iPads down at the primary school. We're not advocating for any of these tonight. So, there's no action by the school committee this evening. This is a report of progress to the committee from administration. Some of the potential expenses that were explained in the previous slide, there are some potential grants that are coming that may take care of those expenses. We're hearing some additional funding from DESI regarding curriculum supplies. We're just waiting to hear if it's going to be a straight entitlement to all districts or if it's a competitive grant process. And I think as we wait for these other grants to be announced and awarded, I think, you know, it's the administration's opinion that we, where most of these are purchases, that we can look at holding off on the balance and spending those and incorporating them into the FY24 budget planning cycle somehow, some way reflect on how we're going to use the ESER funds and possibly offset any local fund accounts. So, that is the update. The slides that are in front of you tonight will be posted on the district's ESER webpage along with the quarterly report, budget report. And as always, we welcome any comments from the community or stakeholders regarding these ESER grants. With that, I'll turn it back to the chair and the committee for any questions or comments.
Thank you, Mr. Cassidy. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Cassidy at this time? Mr. Beardmore?
Thank you, Mr. Cassidy. As I was conjuring up questions in my head as you were talking, you then would answer each of the questions as it came up. So, I appreciate you, your thoroughness here. This is really a question for the, for you together with the superintendent in terms of how this relates to FY24 budget formulation. And this is not a well-formulated question, so bear with me. As I look in particular at the positions that ESER 2 is funding, math specialist, a targeted math teacher, a guidance counselor, a social worker, an IT technician, you've called out three of those positions as possibly shifting forward, I would assume in FY24 to the ESER 3 grant, which would obviously then eat away at anything that we would be able to do from a purchasing standpoint, I would assume, if we were to move all or even two of those forward. But as I look at those five positions, like, all five of them are pretty critical, considering our needs right now that we've identified in terms of performance, in terms of some of our shortcomings from an IT and automation standpoint. Do you accept, expect that those other two positions, or three, depending upon how these fall in your planning, would ultimately roll forward into an FY24 budget? Or do you have any initial thinking on that?
I would say this. It's here, it's on the list. This is one of those difficult conversations that we have as a leadership team. Every year, when we develop that five-year staffing plan and then the budget, we will take a look at each of these positions as well as the data, and we'll have a conversation about, you know, based on what we know in terms of the impact of each of these positions and the data that indicates a higher priority need. We would then sort of prioritize which positions might stay and be grant-funded versus, you know, is there any capacity to absorb other positions into the budget? We would also, as we did last year, give consideration to offsetting, so keeping positions that are no longer going to be grant-funded in the budget by potentially either not filling a position that's being vacated, either through a resignation or a retirement, or being a little bit creative in how we use FTEs to accomplish our goals. Is there a different way that we can restructure different positions elsewhere in the district to free up monies to carry one or more of these positions in the budget? So, I'm not sure that I fully answered your question, but...
No. I think your answer is, we're figuring it out slowly.
Yeah. Yep.
It's just fair. It's fair. I mean, what we have here is options, I guess. The other, the only other thought that I had in relation to this is, you know, that surplus from ESER 2, which is projecting right now at $63,000, there may be another $15,000 on top of that. I'm assuming that, you know, we're not going to be spending from ESER 2 for positions in September, given it sunsets in September. We'll be looking to make a big purchase in the summer or something like that. That's where we'd buy a bunch of Chromebooks or something like that.
Yeah, that's the greatest likelihood. If we thought we could manage to partially pay out of ESER 2 and then pick up the rest in ESER 3...
Yeah, if the numbers work, so you can fund somebody fully for the year or something like that.
Right. We would certainly, that would be on the table as well. And just to mention, relative to the purchase of the Chromebooks, not all of the Chromebooks that we have currently in the district are, have the capacity to run the MCAS test. Some of them are just that old, they're just not capable of, you know, the system requirements that DESI puts out for the MCAS test. So, that's, that's the nature of the additional Chromebook purchases that we're looking at. And again, we may, we likely will not be able to purchase all of them with ESER monies, but at least it would, you know, offset some of what we would be looking to purchase with local funds.
Could I, could I just respond to Mr. Beardmore's statements? And maybe I didn't, I wasn't clear during my presentation. But there are four positions, there's four full-time positions in ESER 2. So, it's the math specialist, the targeted math teacher at the high school, currently the guidance counselor at the primary, and a social worker at the middle school. ESER 3 budget in FY24 is extending the middle school, social worker, and the math specialist. So, really, the, right now, the two positions, I guess they were identified in the slide as for consideration for surplus funding, were the targeted math teacher at the high school and the guidance counselor at the primary. Those are the two positions that there's no funding for afterward this year. So, once again, the middle school, social worker, and the math specialist are budgeted in FY24 ESER funds.
Okay. And those are, thank you for clarifying that, Mr. Cassidy. So, those numbers are already included in the spreadsheet, that total of whatever it is. What brings us to the $147,000 surplus?
Yes.
Those numbers are already included in that?
Yes.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. That makes a huge difference.
Okay. Any other questions about the ESER 2 or 3 funding? No? I do not have any either. So, if we're not looking for action this evening, thank you.
Just to accept the report as a report.
Accept the report.
I'll make a motion to accept the report as presented.
Hold on a second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, Mr. Cassidy.
Thank you, everyone.
Next, under new business, we have the town environmental policy. And I just have a question before we even start this. It seems to me, if I remember correctly, that when Mr. Jeffrey spoke to us about this, he prefaced it with, "This is only about town properties. This would not be school-based properties." I just want to make sure that we're all on that page and that he just wanted our opinion on this in general.
Well, I don't think that Mr. Jeffrey's was looking for our opinion with respect to its applicability on town property. I think he's interested in our opinion in terms of its applicability to school property. So, to what extent can we extend this? And I don't believe this policy has been approved yet. I think it's...
I think it's still in draft.
Still in consideration.
Yeah.
So, to what extent we might adopt all or a portion thereof for the school? That was my interpretation, is, you know, is this something that we could adopt either fully or in some form?
Is that what other people got from that?
I agree.
Okay. All right. Just checking. So, the entirety of the environmental policy is in our folders. And, I mean, I'm not going to go through all of it. I assume people have looked at it. But Mr. Pousatieri did make some comments.
And he is with us this evening, virtually.
So, we would like to hear from him if he would like to comment on his comments. So, Mr. Pousatieri, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. So, I wasn't aware of if this was just for town or, and/or schools. So, just not, some basic concerns or just questions. Section 5, under fertilizer and soil management, the application of nitrogen or phosphorus is prohibited between October 15th and April 30th. Typically, we do our last fertilizing on the turfs, well, the grass fields after fall sports, which happens after October 15th. So, that's a question I had, you know, would they be willing to shorten that time limitation for us for the fields for November 30th to April 30th? Under that same section, paragraph E, phosphorus-containing fertilizers shall not be applied to turf unless the soil test taken not more than two years before the date of application indicates that additional phosphorus is necessary for growth of that turf unless establishing new turf or reestablishing or repairing turf. So, most fertilizers do contain phosphorus. Anyone not familiar with what the numbers are on fertilizer bags, there's three numbers. The first number is your nitrogen, middle number is your phosphorus, and the last number is potassium. Typically, the only fertilizers that do not contain phosphorus are starter fertilizers. And, you know, if that is going to be something that we have to adhere to, then we'd have to work with a landscaper and figure out what fertilizers we would be able to use that do not contain phosphorus. And does that limitation include organic fertilizers or just synthetic fertilizers? So, that is a question that, you know, I'd like to have answered. I know there's a lot of concern about using synthetic fertilizers. I know there's a lot of concern about using synthetic fertilizers. So that would be a question I'd like to have answered. And under the same section, paragraph H, organic natural fertilizers and soil supplements shall be used as necessary for routine and cyclical applications to turf and plants. The concern here is most, if not all, organic fertilizers are more expensive to apply. And one of the main reasons is they do not contain the same amount of nutrients as synthetic fertilizers, so you're actually applying more than you would for application versus And what else was a concern on that? And they also had some other language about, you know, not exceeding a pound per year per square foot or whatever that language was. So really wasn't a concern because it's typically adhered to during the application processes. And under section seven, energy and resource management, they talk about primary staff break rooms shall include trash, recycling, and compost receptacles that are regularly emptied. So I'm assuming if this does transition to schools, it's the break rooms for the staff, teachers, and maintenance and custodial personnel. You know, how is that compost disposal being managed? Who is doing it? And what are we expected to do with the compost? If we're putting it in the receptacles, how are those receptacles being emptied and who's doing it? Obviously, in, you know, June and September and late August, when it's hot out, I don't have to explain to people what happens with compost and certain odors and bugs and so forth. So that what I was really concerned about, you know, how is that process going to be managed?
Thank you for your thoughtful responses to this policy. We appreciate that. Does anyone have any questions about anything for Mr. Pusatieri?
I have comments.
Okay.
So I think that there, there are a number of inherent questions that we need to ask ourselves here. The first question is, do we want to create and adopt an environmental policy and follow the town's lead on this? My personal bias on this is yes. I think that to do otherwise would be a poor example for the kids that we're trying to The second is, there's clearly a need, before we do that, to get answers to some of the questions that Mr. Pusatieri asked, specifically like around, all right, well, how do we deal with compost? Those kinds of things that I think we need to give him the opportunity to work with the facilities, leadership of the town, kind of work through that, those things. And by the way, our answers don't, again, don't have to be identical to the town's. Our policy can be different. When it comes to the phosphates, I think that we need to do some research on this in terms of costs and effectiveness of alternatives. And this is way out of my even consciousness, let alone expertise. But I do know that everything that we put on those fields up there ultimately floats east down the Mass Ave neighborhood into Barneville and down the Hickory Hills. You know, that's kind of the, or at least Willard Brook. And, and I think that we should at least be thoughtful about that. As the superintendent knows, because I've had many conversations with her about it, I'm very interested in the maintenance of those fields, and I want them to be beautiful, but I also want us to be good stewards. And so I think, you know, in my ideal world, Mr. Pusatieri is asking the right questions. I think he ought to go with his staff and get some answers to those questions and then perhaps come back to us with some recommendations.
Yeah, it would be hard to take any action tonight with not having answers to these questions.
Well, but I think the overarching question, like, we, we can't say whether we should, when, when we should fertilize the field or any of that stuff. I mean, that's where the compost goes. That's not our deal. But our deal right now is, do we say to the town, "We applaud your effort to do this, and we will look at what you come up with," and, or not, depending on what you want to do, "but we will, we will develop an environmental policy that works in our educational community that keeps an eye on the water supply where we can, that keeps an eye on the pesticides and the," you know. We can do that. We can say this is something for policy. We can't answer Mr. Pusatieri's questions, but we certainly can say they need answering. Yep.
Yeah, I would agree. I think I don't want to limit facilities with what they need, so I'm glad we're having those conversations. I would agree, I would also state that we should reach out to the select board and let them know, give them our feedback from our facilities director as well. I did have one small question. You had mentioned, I think it was a November 3rd date that would be a better deadline. I was surprised with that date, really, because I was thinking how, like, football and soccer could potentially still be going with playoffs and stuff like that. Is that an issue if teams are going, like, say, deep into the playoffs where we still have to have those fields and we can't work on those fields?
I apologize if I wasn't, if I wasn't clear, November 30th.
Okay, thank you. I thought I heard the third.
You're welcome.
The word that came to mind, Carol, when you were asking about how we would communicate this, I would think that, so two thoughts came to mind. One was, as a resident and taxpayer, I'd like to know if there's any cost associated with this, and there doesn't seem to be that efficacy. Maybe the work has been done, but it's not, it's not written in here. And it perhaps exists, I just am not aware of it. And that might be somewhat instructive to us, but the town owns hundreds of times the real estate that we own.
Right.
And most of that real estate is not maintained at all. So it's just different. Right? So anyway, I'm interested in that. But I, the word that came to mind was harmonious, right? We want whatever we do to not, whatever our operations are doing, I wouldn't want them to substantially negatively impact the efforts that the town is putting into place from an environmental standpoint, right? I'd hate to have the town saying, "We're going above and beyond to save the bees, but here's what's happening over in the school department," right? Which is having a negative impact. So I'd want whatever we, wherever we land to be, to some degree, harmonious with the town within the context of our operations, which is we got to run soccer, we got to run soccer until, you know, whatever day we run soccer. And still fertilize and take care of the fields.
I apologize. I don't mean to interrupt. Formal business, but conservation commission?
School committee.
School committee.
So they're no longer doing it here?
Across the street.
Thanks. Nice to meet you, by the way.
The Ritter Building, Bob.
Thank you.
So excited to see a big crowd tonight.
It so happened we were having an environmental conversation.
We thought we were on the right page there. Oh, well. So I think, I think what I'm hearing from everyone is that we do want to do something that matches with the town to a certain extent, within the limitations of what you can do with schools and how they work. We'd like to have Mr. Pusatieri's questions answered. Mr. Beardmore has the question of cost. Yes, I'm sure this is going to cost, and where that cost is coming from, obviously. So, and Mr. Jeffries wanted an answer on this by the end of the month. Is that what I heard? Do I remember that?
Mm-hmm.
So by the end of the month. So do we want to then send to the select board Mr. Pusatieri's statement along with a note from us asking about cost and commenting that it is our intention to work on a policy that perhaps will not mirror, but will work hand in hand with what they're doing? Does that make sense to you, Mr. Pusatieri, from your, from your seat?
Yes. If you'd like, I can forward you the document that I put together for the superintendent for this meeting, just to, so everything is clear.
I've got it.
We have it.
We have it.
Okay.
Yeah. So then why don't we do that? Why don't we plan on doing that? So I'll talk to you and we'll figure out how to get that taken care of. But we'll, we'll do that concerning this issue. Okay? All right. Do we have to vote on that? Yeah, it says action. So could I have a motion, having something to do with what we just said we were going to do?
We authorize the chair and superintendent to communicate with the select board our questions and intent to develop a complementary policy.
Second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All righty, that's what we'll do. Thank you so much, Mr. Pusatieri.
You're welcome. I'd like to make one more comment.
Sure thing.
But going back to this weekend's, this past weekend's activities is to give a shout out to the custodial and maintenance personnel who also had a hand in making this a successful weekend event.
Thank you for taking the time to state that. You're absolutely correct. And not a, the best comment I could possibly make about it, Mr. Pusatieri, is it didn't even occur to me because everything was just fine, which is probably exactly the way you want it to be.
I didn't get any phone calls this weekend.
Well, that was a good thing. That was a good thing. We do appreciate the work that the maintenance crew did to make that a successful weekend. Thank you for bringing that up. You are absolutely correct. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go on to town building use concepts. So here we are. I don't know, my, my feel is the best thing to do is to discuss the building, municipal building concepts, and then discuss Turkey Hill. Or it may come up as we go through it. I mean, I think that the, most of the concepts create a limited place to put a new school, but maybe as we go through, we can comment on that. But I think what they want first is what are our thoughts on these concepts?
I think I want to add from your comments from last meeting about the Community Links service program, because you had mentioned how it would literally, the program, we would lose the program.
The early learning.
So I think that should be in the school committee's response to the
Absolutely.
To the committee, that they need to find a location, help find a location, work with the select board, the town manager, whatever. That would need to be, there would need to be space, and the town would have to help out with that if the town is reorganizing all the buildings.
So just for clarification on this, I'll throw down the new guy card again. The, the school link services, is that the one that requires co-location with an administrator or, that's not the one?
The one that requires the administrator to be on site is our ACE program, which is our 18 to 22-year-olds special needs.
I just couldn't remember which was, yeah. I knew one of them required.
The, the school links is, correct me if I'm wrong, is the program that Patty does with the toddlers.
Yep.
The very, very young kids, like the babies.
Right.
And she needs
Parent education.
Parent education. So she needs a phone somewhere.
Yep.
And that's a requirement.
Her requirement for her grant is a phone. The program that I am most concerned about is the Early Learning Center, which is, now correct me once again if I'm wrong, because we didn't do this when my kids were young, but, which is the program that runs during the school day for preschool-aged children but that have not been placed in the lottery and therefore are there. Or do they pick up kids, like, the morning kids can go there in the afternoon? How does that work? How's that for a question?
There, there have been times when there may be a preschool-aged student who had a space based on the lottery at the primary school, pre-K, and then would be transported up to T C P to be part of the Early Learning Center through lunch and then for the afternoon session. So the program runs a morning session and an afternoon session. We, we refer to it as a play school. There is some academic component for the kids, you know, learning letters and colors and numbers and that kind of thing, but it is not a licensed preschool, there is not a licensed teacher teaching that, that morning or afternoon session. So, yeah, it runs during the typical school day, and typically, there's a total of 24 students in the program, morning and afternoon combined, round about that number.
Do some kids stay all day? Or is it just one or the other?
We have, we have had occasions where a student is present for the morning and the afternoon session, and we have staff that stay with them for lunch. Of course, they have to bring their own lunch because at T C P, we don't have a cafeteria, so.
And just from my understanding, in terms of what's at stake here with these scenarios, it would be both of those programs that are homeless, given these scenarios?
So this is why I wanted to bring up this. So there's a letter from the superintendent to the school committee dated April 27, 2022, where she outlines each of the programs that municipal building design had asked about the extended day, the Early Learning Center, and the Community Links program, and the ACE program. So in that letter, she states that the Community Link School, Community School Length Services program is grant-funded, and we would like, look to maintain this program and would hope to utilize space in the Lunenburg Public Library for parent educational sessions. However the grant is requirements, if we cannot meet the requirements in new space, we may lose the grant funding and therefore lose the program. In that section, she also references the Early Learning Center, but that the program would, would be eliminated.
So that's the one that's really
More concerned that it was the Early Learning Center.
Yeah. I mean, just the history on, both of my kids did the Community Links program, and when my daughter was young, it was literally done in a room at the old primary school after it had been abandoned. And I think when my son did it, we did it at the, at the Mossman Center, between when it was a teen center and Boys and Girls Club or whatever, but it was during the day. So you can kind of, that can be a somewhat transient
The challenge for us is that, and I don't know that this was the case always, because it's my understanding that the program has been in existence a long time and was not always state grant-funded. It's not so much that we couldn't find a location to have the parent education sessions or even the, the children's education sessions, because they often bring in STEM projects and everything for them, but it becomes a little bit more of a challenge for their play sessions, because there's an awful lot of toddler toys that occupy the room over at T C P. I'm not sure the library would want us to bring all of the toys over to stay at the So that, that part of the program would become a little bit of a challenge. So that part of the program would become a little bit of a challenge. The most significant part of the challenge, though, is that the grant requires a dedicated phone line. So I can't even say, oh, Mrs. Gillette, just use my phone number, put that on the grant as your phone line. They want a dedicated phone line to that program, period, not used by other.
It can't be a cellphone or a?
My understanding is that they want a dedicated office space phone line, not a cellphone. But we can look into that and verify.
I mean, it's got to, it's 2022. I mean, can we?
Even if we had an office line that
Forward.
Forwards to that cellphone if we need, so they're not calling her cellphone number.
But the only challenge with that is, let's say they use my line, then everybody who's calling to talk to me will also be forwarded to.
But we can, I mean, we can.
Yeah, yeah. We'll take a look at.
Or if there's something really archaic with the grant, we could probably get that addressed. I mean, you know, I mean, I can't imagine that we.
I'll look into the details a bit more, but Mrs. Gillette has consistently reinforced that that
So for the
... with the grant.
For the education program for the young kids, what do we call it?
Early Learning Center.
Early Learning Center. How much space are we talking about there?
Right now, they utilize one classroom, and it's one of the classrooms that we use for extended day, because extended day is there in the morning before school hours, but then Early Learning Center comes in during the school day, and then they're gone before extended day comes back for the afternoon.
And our classrooms at the primary school are fully booked?
Yes, they are. By the time we would have to make a move, might something be different, possibly? And that's why it's a challenge, right? Like, when I was asked to give the scenarios, what would we do? Right now, it's based on an ambiguous timeline. You know, we certainly could look into renting space for the ACE program or the extended day or Early Learning Center. But the thing is, if you find a suitable space that's available, you better work on getting that contracted and leased. You can't say, well, hold this and maybe we'll be back in two or three years because we'll need the space. If we had a very definitive timeline, we would have much more information to work with in terms of an action plan and what's viable in that timeline versus what's not.
I just like to get creative and think like, oh, what about like Brook's House? Could that be a potential spot for any of these programs if it was renovated to a level?
It would have to be significantly renovated.
But maybe that's something that the town would be interested in, because then it saves the building, because they got to keep track of the building anyways, they got to take care of it, and now there's somebody in there, so they're actually taking care of it.
I mean, I went to play school at Mrs. Crafty's, which is a 200-year-old house that was renovated, you know, and put an addition on the back of it, and worked out pretty well for about 30 years in Lunenburg, you know, for a lot of kids. I mean, the other option is, I hate to use the P-word, but portables.
When we discussed all of the options that were presented in the letter that Mr. Leighton referenced, we actually talked about what about building one of those modular prefab houses for ACE and/or any of our extended day or Early Learning Center? So yes, you've got the one-time cost of the purchase, but then you've got to connect to all utilities, water, sewer, electricity.
Especially for that age, yeah.
You know?
I think that's the conversation we need to send to this committee and say, have this a part of your plan and put it in those sections.
So it's interesting we started here, because I had a conversation with Mr. Jeffries last weekend, and that particular topic was not in my head, but the topic around extended day and the usage of, for example, the gymnasiums at the primary school in Turkey Hill and running into youth basketball and volleyball and all these other things that get programmed in those buildings. Like, you know, this is the push and pull that we're dealing with. And I hate to get ahead of your structured conversation, Carol, but
No, no, that's all right. Because the thought of all is jumbled together.
In my thinking here, you know, the reality is, is what Mr. Jeffries suggested is, let's look at the practical reality of needing, I'm putting in air quotes, needing to preserve Turkey Hill for another 15 years, because there isn't the money to do an extensive renovation or replacement of that building. So how can we preserve the life of that building to get us to where we have the borrowing capacity to do what we need? Okay. Like, there's work to do there, right? And we need to kind of enumerate that work. But then beyond that, okay, well, what are the programming realities that we're facing based on the population that we have and the services that we currently offer? So we've just talked about a couple. The other is all of these community programs that use our space to run. And, you know, I hate to bring up the topic that I brought up a couple weeks ago, but, you know, before the schools moved out of TC Passio's, there wasn't pickleball in the gymnasium, there wasn't the Lions Club in the cafeteria, you know? But these have become programs that the community wants to continue to support. I still want youth basketball for nine-year-olds to be able to run at 4:30 in the afternoon from Turkey Hill, because it's an important program. So here's my question. If we knock down the north wing of Turkey Hill, excuse me, of TC Passio's, I walked around that property on Saturday, could we put up a metal gymnasium and add to our gym space, right? Can we think about what are the ramifications that we're bringing on here? And if we need, if we're really talking about gymnasium space, as where push comes to shove, right? What does it cost to put up a metal building with two small-sized gyms in it, right? You know, perhaps a regulation size, but could we get away with the size that's in TC Passio's? You know, I mean, I think that, and what would that cost? Because if we're talking about threading the needle for $45 million in excludable debt over the next 10 years, I think we need to be able to think creatively about how we get there. Anyway, that's, and I, the other point that I wanted to make is, I do think we have to take that suggestion that he made very seriously. I, you know, the more I thought about, and I think his, you know, I obviously went at him pretty hard, but his argument is a very sound argument. We don't have the borrowing capacity to do everything we want to do as a community. Now, I disagree with some of his political posturing around what we spend on kids versus everybody else. My mother was on the school committee in the 80s, right? We did not spend a dime on new buildings from the late 60s until the early 2000s and did the absolute minimum to maintain it. Bob Ockerman still lives in Lunenburg, he's probably watching tonight, and he could attest, he was the master of duct tape and bubble gum. The investments that we didn't make during that time led to the investments that we've needed to make over the last 20-odd years. And that's just, it is what it is. It's no, it's no generation's fault, right? But we have to take care of the kids. What can we do to come up with an amenable solution that works, perhaps not perfectly, but as well as we possibly can for everybody? And in my mind, if it's gymnasium space, then let's figure out how to work that into the plan. But there may be more to it than that, though.
Could be.
So just to throw out some ideas. So I love the conversation about the gym space, too, because my first thought was literally, let's have youth sports start a little later so we can have the after-school programs, they'll be able to use the gym, the cafeteria, and start, you know, practices. Maybe they go after dinner, maybe they got to shorten practices. I hate to take away from the youth programs, too, but it's a balance, it's a give and take. But after hearing Mr. Pierce's more idea about the gym behind TCP, I think that's an amazing idea. I think as long as they can affordably do it, but I think that's a great community space, literally right behind the senior center where they can access that. So I really like that idea. Again, if it's affordable. I'm trying to think what else. That was it for now, I guess.
That was it for now. No, I think I would agree that that's a good idea, but since you opened the can of worms on Mr. Jeffries' comments the other evening, I've thought a lot about them as well. I have thought, he prefaced everything by saying, he has been telling people forever, you need to keep up these old buildings, and nobody listens to him. That was his preface. Do they listen to him on the select board? Do the people who decide how much money we can spend, do they listen to him? Because if we say, yes, we're going to do what Mr. Jeffries said, and we get all excited about doing it that way, and everybody else goes, we're not spending money on that building. So before we sink too much into that, we need to know what the town manager's tolerance of that idea is, what her thoughts are, because as best I can tell, that's who manages most of the money, but also the select board, what the general feeling is. He's very persuasive, and I think it's probably, after listening to many, many conversations about debt capacity, as I have, I agree. I can't imagine how we're going to get debt capacity to build a new building. It doesn't look like it's there. And to tear down and renovate, we all know that's the same as building a new building, because that's what you just priced out across the way here, you know? So I, my thought is, we need to find out who else besides Mr. Jeffries thinks this is a good idea. Or we need to discover, if we want to champion it, how are we going to pull everybody together on that? One or the other, I think. Go ahead.
Yeah, so that's what I forgot, the Turkey Hill part. So, yeah, my first instinct, and I think in most of the school committee, too, is that we're going to build a new school, too. And I think, I'm like, I like to be a problem solver, so it's like, all right, if that's not the case, if we really are not building a new school, or if that's not the direction, then let's go all in, and okay, what are we doing then?
Right.
Let's do the upgrades that we need, whether it's, you know, science labs or whatever, like, let's start thinking about that in the capital plan, let's invest in these classrooms, whether it's the, you know, smart boards, the windows, whatever, and let's make sure we have a well-thought-out plan. But then keep asking about the stuff in the capital plan. Maybe it's not the roof, so that it dedicates us using state funding, but that we put in requests to see if the town and the capital planning will actually approve it and give us the funding to upgrade the building, to upgrade the classrooms, to upgrade the gym space, the cafeteria, the windows, the security. And we keep working on the building, but at this point, I don't think the committee is ready to commit to taking state funding to commit ourselves to the building.
Well, I think we need to game plan this.
Yeah, we need to figure this out.
Right? Like, we, everything that you just described needs to be put through the lens of the MSBA and timing scenarios and the capital plan, right? So today, a lot of things you mentioned aren't on the capital plan. Some of them are, there's technology upgrades on the capital plan for Turkey Hill, actually. There's a roof, there's, you know, but they're spread out over a period of time that, you know, is, I think, the result of analysis that's been done on that building in the past in terms of anticipated needs. Now, if we say, okay, we're going to put this through an MSBA funding lens, then we're getting a little bit more real in terms of how we need to do this financially. And then once we understand that, we can go to the select board and the town manager and say, here's the reality. If you need the school department's support for the municipal buildings, then we need programming support for, you know, early childhood education and for after-school activities and community services and those kinds of things, and we need support on the capital plan to reprioritize these things so that we can shore up Turkey Hill and program it as an elementary school for the next 15 years. There's currently $15 million on the capital plan projected for Turkey Hill over the next 10 years. I actually think it's going to cost more than that, given everything that you just described. But, you know, I don't know where any of that falls into the town manager's priorities. And so I think you're right, but there's work that we need to do upfront before we bring that to them and to her to get that feedback, right? Because if I were another member of the select board, I'd say, okay, well, show me the details, right? What are you actually asking me to support? And the truth is, is I don't think, hmm, about $15 million over the next three or four years is the right answer. I think we owe them a little bit more, a little bit more detail. And I think we also need to ask the municipal building committee, can we work in some alternative space here into this plan, you know, to address the programming needs that we have? I mean, all of which needs to get supported by the town manager and the select board, but
Right.
But these are competing interests that we've got to figure out how to come up with a plan that we can all agree to.
So it still is quite a mess. But so if we're, all right, so we're going to talk more about this. If we're going to deal with the Turkey Hill piece, we need to know particularly, like, the plumbing at this date and the wiring at that date and the HVAC at that date, we probably, well, maybe we would. Would we, it seems, would we do that all as one? Like, do we have to call the municipal, the school building people and say, this is our problem? How would, how would it look most favorable for you? Like, do we do all these systems at once? Do we do it, all right, we're going to do this system this year, and then we're going to ask you for more money next year and more money next year? I don't think they work that way. I don't know. I have no idea.
I don't think that's going to be on us. I think that's going to be up to the town, how they decide through the capital plan. Maybe they do it all at once, maybe they do it separately. But I think once they commit, they're committed. My concern is that we're not just throwing a Band-Aid on and the kids have to live for 15 years in these schools, that we're not just putting on a roof, we're not just fixing the plumbing, that we're actually making it a top-grade educational facility, that if we're really committing ourselves to this building for 15 years, let's make sure they get a good educational experience, that they're not still in today's building.
I agree with both of you, but I think that there's a certain risk to trying to sell this on a year-to-year capital planning basis. Right. Like, I mean, there's an article that I'm behind that gives town meeting the authority to delete items on the capital plan, right? So I'm cognizant of that. But the reality is, is that ideally, in the spring, the municipal building committee is going to bring a plan to the town, right? And I don't know exactly what form that will come, in either a budget request or just a non-binding endorsement or whatever. I don't know yet. I don't think anybody really does. But ideally, in the spring, that's going to come forward. And I think what I would love to have as a part of that is, there's a school component to this that is not just a debt exclusion, but it's a long-term capital planning commitment, and commitments in air quotes. We have to pass the capital plan every year, right? But it's, when we bring it forth in 2024 and 2025 and 2026, we can show, this is where we are relative to project, whatever we want to call it, Super Turkey or whatever, right? Like, it needs its own thing, and this is what we're, how we're orienting ourselves over a five-year period or whatever it is.
But I guess I wouldn't be surprised if they just keep the current capital plan as Turkey Hill is lined up.
And then, but what I'm saying And then, but what I'm saying is, is we need to present an alternative. And if that alternative is not endorsed by the select board and the town manager and the other powers that be, then I think we all vote no. And we make our case to the town that this is not going to suit the needs of the school department. It's as simple as that, right? I mean, this is, how do we, this is political mathematics, right? How do we get the powers that be, the powers that be, to get to a point where we can all say, this is the best solution for everyone, given our financial limitations? But I think, I don't think that this plan that's put forth as a single debt exclusion without everyone understanding, nodding, agreeing to a plan that also addresses the schools through the capital planning process, or through a combination of debt exclusion and capital planning, that's a possibility too, I think that that has to be part of that agreement.
I agree.
So our response to the select board regarding this...
Or even the building design?
I'm sorry, the building, thank you, the building design committee. I'm getting Mr. Jeffrey's hats. Our response to them would be a couple-fold. One would be the lack of these concepts dealing with the early learning center and extended day, as far as gymnasiums go, and the need to find gymnasium space for those youth programs so that the schools can use their gymnasiums for extended day. So the glaring, missing piece for the school department in these programs, in these thought-out concepts, except for the one with school department keeps TCP, because that would fix those problems. But the glaring, the glaring holes in these concepts are the early learning center and the extended day.
And I think we throw out to them, because I think they're going to love this, the Brooks House, if they renovate it, and it's already on the capital plan, I think we throw out. That's a solution that everybody's looking for, is what to do with the Brooks House. If we can say that one of our programs is going in, if we can work with the superintendent and decide which program fits best there with renovations, they're going to jump on that, I think. I think they're going to love that, that they can present that to the select board and say, oh, here's your solution for Brooks House.
I also want to be clear, I don't think that TCP being thrown back to the school district without a plan to get TCP healthy is a viable option, and I think we should stipulate that. Because that building needs, I mean, it probably needs $10 million just to keep the lights on for 10 years, you know? Like, we don't have a plan for that. So that's an additional funding debacle, for lack of a better word, dilemma is probably a better word.
So I can tell you that the TCP needs more than a patch on the roof.
Right.
For sure.
It's a gigantic umbrella.
I think from the building design committee's side of it is like, if it was going to get torn down, let's patch it, use it as a temporary space to house people as we renovate different buildings.
Right, right, well, that makes sense, you know, if that's what you're doing, but in, even in concept two, it's transition space, and it's being used as a future site for Turkey Hill or additional fields. So nobody thinks it's going to be around for long.
It seems like, from the select board meeting too, even Mr. Alonso said he was really into the hybrid version or scenario.
Yeah, they're really looking at that bottom version. So those comments go in, talking about these concepts, but the bigger issue is, with any of these, we have to figure out how we're going to approach Turkey Hill. And if the approach is going to be, as Mr. Jeffrey suggested, by taking the MS, whatever those initials are, building authority, MSBA money, and fixing it to make it a viable educational facility, not just Band-Aid it, because we all know what happens to Band-Aid ed buildings, and, you know, if, then we're okay with that, you know? We're okay with waiting, we're okay, we said we'd take our place in the line, and we're okay, as long as the line keeps moving. And that's what I keep saying to Mr. Jeffrey's when I speak to him, is, you know, he says, you're jumping the line. No, we're not jumping the line, but the line has to keep moving, you know? We can't, we can't be in dead water for another 10 years. So then, if we add to that, that we support what they're doing, but we need them to support a plan for Turkey Hill as part of this, is that what I'm hearing we want to do?
I think ultimately, I would agree with you, but I think I would preface it with, we have work to do. Like, we're going to come to you with a revised capital plan.
Based on?
Based on this reality that would necessitate the endorsement of the powers that be in town, not just the municipal building committee, but the select board and the town manager as well.
And it's not just keeping up with Turkey Hill, but expanding on educational opportunities for the students?
Well, the way I would think of it is, yeah, so the way I would think of it is, is I think I said a couple weeks ago, when I took the tour with Mrs. Champagne and Dr. Burnham, is it's not a building that is programmed as an elementary school, and ought to be, right? Now, what that actually means, I don't really know, because I'm not an educator, I don't know. But, you know, that needs some thought, and it probably needs some workshopping amongst the faculty at Turkey Hill and other experts, like, what do you do when you convert a middle school into an elementary school? Like, has this even been done before?
Sure.
You know, we've got, we've got three grade levels, elementary grades, in a middle school right now. It's functioning, but it's probably not functioning as well as it should be. And so how do we get it from good enough to should, or something like that, right?
Yeah, it's finding that, kind of almost getting that wish list from staff and faculty. I just think back to the school I work at, it's a vocational school built in the 60s, and each year, we start a new project, maybe it's expanding the science labs, and now the science labs are 21st century science labs. It's the little things here and there, but I think that's what we're missing, that improvements of those individual classrooms, that maybe it's adding sinks, or whatever it is, but let's make the building better if we're going to be stuck in that building. If that's the commitment that the town wants to make, let's make sure we're not just putting on a roof and fixing the plumbing and the windows.
So the heating issue, the temperature issue, it's not conducive to learning at this point, it's miserable.
Yeah, and so the other, the other practical thing that I think will, you know, ultimately kind of follow the financial discussion is, okay, once you have this plan, how do you actually make it happen in a functioning school building, right? And that's, you know, a big thing that Mr. Pousatieri is going to have to advise us on and talk us through, right? Like, the old high school in Lunenburg, we did, as a necessity, we had to upgrade all of those heating units in that building, a few years before we tore it down, because we had to, there was no other choice. I would imagine that part of a renovation is, is we've got to basically change the guts of that heating system to make it efficient, reliable, constant, whatever the right terms are, that's probably not something you do in a week. So, I'm not saying that the whole thing hinges on this, I'm sure we can move stuff around and make it happen, but I think a lot of this work is not stuff that's going to happen between June 15th and September 1st, like, we've got to, we've got to think through some of those practical realities as well.
So the message that goes to the municipal building committee, I think I have the part about what's missing from these concepts. Are we going to recommend one concept over another? Or do you think they basically are going with that hybrid concept regardless? Or, you know, so we have that piece we have to look at? And then?
The hybrid, they're saying demolish or sell the Brooks House where we're asking for...
Yeah, the Brooks, in the hybrid, it says to demolish or sell.
And again, I think with our feedback, they may, and I think they'll change their idea of the demolish or sell, probably.
I mean, I think that the hybrid concept is well-reasoned, you know? I think your idea around the Brooks House is one that...
It's worth a shot.
Yeah, and I think they could literally change that completely, the hybrid, to fit that need, to fit that scenario.
You know, and I think that, you know, I think that would be good feedback.
Just to bounce off your idea, and I don't know if this is really, this is more of the building design committee idea, but if they're literally looking for a PAC studio too, you could almost build a PAC studio and gym right in the back.
I'm sure PAC would love bouncing basketballs.
Right next to the...
Barriers, I'm sure they'd figure it out, but it's there. They always worry about PAC studio.
There, I think there is, probably even today, there's, you know, if you take that kind of gravel lot area, if you had to do it today, you could probably make something like that fit. But if you knock down that north wing, I think there's going to be ample room to do something that could fit that bill. And, I mean, I did some just cursory research online, looking at gymnasiums and metal buildings, and I don't think it's cost prohibitive to do that.
Well, it definitely is worth the suggestion, because the gym space is really what the issue is with the extended day, is getting the kids into smaller groups so they can do, move them around a bit. And I think if we had the gym and the cafeteria, that probably is workable, says she.
I don't think it's ideal, but it's...
It's not ideal, it's clearly not ideal, but it's workable. But putting them all in one room is not workable. At the end of the day, to have 75 kids in a cafeteria, that, you know, for the balance of the, and not be able to move them around, that's definitely not workable. So, so, do we go with a recommended concept, or no?
I would not, I think, the way I would phrase this is, I think that the hybrid approach has merit, but I think that we need to engage in a dialogue that includes some compromise in terms of addressing unmet needs, and then just kind of spell that out and see where we land.
Yeah, I would say we don't even have to mention any of the concepts, I think just addressing the needs of the schools.
So, then, should we draft a statement and then bring it back in two weeks? This is not one of these, here's the information, we'll let you draft the statement comments. You know, I need more feedback than that.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, and I think just reach out to the committee, because I know they are meeting next Monday, so maybe to reach out, we'll be in touch.
So just say that we will be in touch, we're talking about it, you can take a look at our last meeting, and you will know what we're musing about.
Yeah.
I mean, I think that's something, I'm comfortable with Brian delivering that message, I don't think that requires written communication before Monday.
Well, that's true.
Yeah, I think we still should have the right written form, but yeah, I can give feedback to the committee.
Well, I can, I can send something to the committee as well, it doesn't, you know, just to say that we have some concerns, and we're going to do a little bit more talking about it, and...
So I would recommend that, only because I have an interesting Monday next week. We made the volleyball playoffs.
Oh, you did, did you?
Tomorrow, if we win, which we are the higher seed, so we are likely to win, but if you're listening and you're on the other team, yeah. But if we win, we will be traveling to Nantucket on Monday.
Oh, pretty.
If they win their game.
That's exciting.
I will be gone all day Monday, if everything works out the way it should.
Everything works out the way it should.
And I'll take my first trip to Nantucket, so I'll be excited.
Congrats.
Well, I think that's wonderful. I bet the Nantucket people are delighted, for once they're not the ones going to the I know that when we have, like, a school council meeting or something, we send somebody else. Is this the kind of committee we can send somebody else?
You could for the feedback, I don't know if, like, the conversations will make sense based off of what they're talking about, but...
Or would it just be better to write something up?
Yeah, I think just writing something up is fine.
Alright, so that meeting is Monday, like, at 6?
Yeah, I think it's, it might be 6, I'd have to double check.
I'm thinking about my life Monday, I want to make sure that somebody's on that meeting so that if I send that communication, if there are questions, alright.
It's a Zoom too.
Okay. It's, it's hard when people have questions and there's no, and I can say, and Brian has gone to Nantucket. So, I think I can, let me just make sure. I just want to make sure.
You may miss them.
Yes, I can...
Yeah, I know.
Okay. So I think, I think that's probably the way to go then. So I'll write up a statement that we are mulling about some issues, and if you wish to have a look at them, take a look at our meeting, or I will be on, if they want more specifics, I will be available for questions.
And after our next meeting, we'll have written feedback.
We'll have something formal for them. Alright, that seems reasonable, is there any, any other, good, some great ideas, appreciate it. And Peter, appreciate your financial understanding of how all of this works, because that's not my forte, for sure, and I never would have thought of metal gymnasiums. All I could think of is how cold it would be, but I assume there's a way to heat them.
I think it's great, it's just like, literally, when we get more people involved in the conversations, we're going to have a better result, and that's, that's the key.
Alright, okay, and we all set on this then, for this evening? Okay, then next we have committee reports. So who has committee reports?
Capital planning, met last Wednesday. We heard the school department's request for capital items. The superintendent and the chair were both in attendance, and the superintendent presented with Mr. Pousatieri. I think they did a really good job in articulating our needs. There was a very good discussion, I think, around all of the items, including some of the security-related items that, you know, are sensitive, but I think, you know, hopefully we were able to address some of the questions and concerns of members of the committee. Also worth noting, the police chief and the school resource officer were both at the meeting, and the chief, I think, spoke very eloquently and with specific expertise in terms of lessons learned from a number of incidents that have happened over the decades that have been brought to bear in part of this comprehensive plan, which these items are part of. So I think it was a really good discussion. The capital planning committee is not meeting this week, but will meet next Monday and Wednesday. We'll be hearing from facilities and public safety on Monday, I believe, and DPW on Wednesday. We'll be hearing from facilities and public safety on Monday, I believe, and DPW on Wednesday. And tomorrow is a high school advisory committee meeting.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
The building design committee is meeting Monday, the 7th, and the athletic advisory is meeting Monday, the 14th.
No meetings.
Nothing, and I have, the finance committee met on the 27th of October, and the finance director certified that the free cash is $2,838,500. So, once again, it is a bumper crop. I don't know that it's going to continue that way, but that's what it is now. The DPW director was there, and he spoke very well, and he did a really good job explaining what their needs are, but what I took away from it is, they have seven plows and four of them are out of service. So, when you look at sanding the parking lot, they have seven plows and four are out of service, and two are backordered. So, I, he's got his hands full over there, and I was very impressed with the way he handled the situation, but clearly, we need a sander with that situation. Then there was a discussion with Dr. Burnham and Mr. Cassidy, who had back-to-back evening meetings with the finance committee and the capital planning, and they talked about the capital projects, updates on last year's, and our requests, the 10-year capital project plan, the five-year staffing plan, the ESF-funded positions, the Opera funding request, the strategy for continuous improvement, and the budget presentation format, which I don't think you've got too much change on that.
Yeah, it seems that they're not looking to make too much change.
Not too much of a change, so it may be something similar, but we'll see if we can, once again, invite them to our budget question and answer sessions, or invite them to submit their questions and at least watch. So maybe some of that can be done ahead of time, and it won't make for such a lengthy presentation meeting at FinCom, because that goes really long. So that was, that's what I had. And their next meeting is the 10th of November. So topics for future discussion, we have to finish the municipal building issue. And then, the environmental has to go back on there. Is there anything else that we, outside of what's typically on there? I think that was the, continuing on, I think that's about where we are.
Suffice to say, next meeting will be fully remote.
The next meeting will be fully remote.
Could I make a request that we start 15 minutes later that evening? I have a conflict that I cannot get out of, but I can do 6:45, I just can't do 6:30.
Fine with me.
Yeah?
That's fine with me.
Yeah? Okay.
If not, I'll show up late.
Otherwise, you will be late. Okay. 6:45, then, the next meeting. Okay, so if there is nothing else, we need to go to executive session?
Did we want to offer up another public comment?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. I just skipped right over it. Is there a public comment from anyone? You don't see anybody with a public comment?
No.
Thank you for reminding me, though.
Make a motion to go into executive session adjourn after.
All right, and it is executive session to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategy with respect thereto. So do we have a second on the motion?
Second, that, sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, then.
No, no, that's the...